Time is now six thirty-three on September fourteenth. We've got a call to order, the regular meeting of the village board. Included in that, we're having a late start to that, we'll include the consent for the committee meeting at the hall as well. Is that acceptable?
Yes.
Okay. If you'll please rise for the plug allegiance.
Plug allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice in all.
Roll call please.
Trustee Horn.
Here.
Gonzalez.
Here.
Gray.
There.
Holston.
Present.
Hop. Here. Basic.
Hop's on vacation.
Okay.
Just call and make the appointment.
At this point in the meeting, we'll go to open the public agenda items only. If you'd like to come to the podium, please limit your comments to three minutes and be ready to address. Anybody pretending to do agenda items will either the village board meeting or the committee meetings. Okay? We go into the next item, consent agenda. I want to take a motion to get approved, consent agenda.
So who?
Second.
Gonzalez and Gray. Roll call please.
Trustee Gonzalez.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Holston.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
I'm just waiting for two more. I guess I'm already not here. All right. Mr. Clerk, if you're all right with you, we have a guest, if you will, for a beautification award. I need you to go ahead and present that. That's fine, just so.
You guys are staging a whole meeting, right? You're staging a whole meeting.
Well, this is less than half an hour, yes.
No guarantees.
Well, going on to the perks and rec review, this is during our meeting in the fall, we had it posted probably since the beginning of the year in our winter that we are going to be doing beautifications awards this year. And we had several entrants again this year. And as we made our rounds throughout the community, we had both peers, your peers, as well as village officials, as well as department heads, going around and taking a look at the awards. And after all things said and done, we have given the award to Jeff and Terry Lyons. So can you please come up and accept your award? Congratulations. Play it proudly. And to this, you can post in your gorgeous yard as well. All right. Very nice.
Oh, you got a picture too. Wow. All right, a big couple. All right. Good.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Well, thank you very much.
And all those hours you spend outside.
Yeah, right. I have to be outside, right?
Yes.
I need to be outside when it's warm out.
Thanks for coming. Thank you. Yep, thank you.
You're working this thing for the whole meeting, Lucy.
Yeah.
We'll be back in a few.
Yeah.
Sure you will.
Thank you.
I just have a couple of items I want to introduce from Anthony DeLuca, but before that, personal observation just from Fall Fest. The volunteers and the time they spend selflessly helping us. Mary Jo Vincent, of course, she's director, but she and Bethany Abbott are here nonstop, just crazy, crazy. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention Michelle Powell. She's here nine in the morning until one in the morning, nonstop. She doesn't give a damn. The other one is the administrator's son, John. My gosh, the guy was here as long as anybody else. I never saw him sit down. Just crazy volunteer stuff. And of course, Sid and Betty, they're always here, back and forth, doing what they do. So thanks for everything. Having said that, Donna Fanning, the district manager for state representative, Anthony DeLuca, sent us the following, and there's copies out on the podium, and I'm reading this as she sent to us, so it's kind of third person. Representative DeLuca and I respectfully request your assistance in making constituents aware of two upcoming events. Representative DeLuca will be hosting the eightieth district in the upcoming weeks. The first is a free paper shredding, September seventeenth, and we have included fly, I'm sorry, I'm just getting ahead here, shredding confidential documents. The second is the annual senior fair, which is always attended and hit with the seniors. So there's a lot of information there. Both flyers are out on the podium, and I suggest you pick them up if you're interested. And there's a phone over here, and it's all good stuff. Henry, what?
Thank you very much. Make sure we blend in the items from the, just try to figure where to blend in the items from the committee meeting. Building code. DJ, can I defer to you on that? This one, okay?
Would you like to defer?
Well, we have been talking for a while, and I just want to make sure the board's aware of it before we present it with the form of ordinance.
Can we leave that up in the committee of health?
Yeah.
Especially the building code.
Yeah, so because I know we want to update our property maintenance code as well as our building codes. So I believe currently we're at two thousand and three?
They're sporadic throughout the years, oh, three, five energy codes are new, but we pass out ones, but other than the building code, there's a lot of gray areas in the codifier that we're working through to try to crack so that it meets that, as well as I believe that the NCC meetings are going to kind of work out some of the issues with the variance requests and so on and so forth regarding maybe fencing or something, sending a few. And so we've been going through the codifier for the years now with the passing of the new ordinances and the financing of these schedules. We're able to try to codify and get to the latest and greatest, but one of the things that we need to do before we actually do that is look into updating the building code, make sure any amendments that need to be taken out aren't taken out, and then kind of get rid of some of those gray areas that could make a builder technically in one way or another, usually financially, to help or hurt the village or the, you know, the standards that we're trying to set. And when the calls and the questions always that keep barring the building department or the engineers, back and forth talk. So there's been roughly forty, eighty hours put into the building code stuff on one aspect of it, but then as far as the year, improving the years to electric code or building code or so on and so forth, there tends to be a few things that we need to really discuss and talk about to make sure that we're on the same page, as well as the moving fire protection district has recently passed a few codes and updated some of their bylaws and so forth. And so to make sure that they're kind of running the term, we kind of need to grab everything together to make sure that's right. So basically, the discussion of the building code is just that, it's, we are doing that, but we really want to kind of push it even along. And so in order for that to happen, there's probably going to be a lot of ordinances that are going to have to be changed in order to be able to get that to happen, and some amendments to whatever code push along as well, and I don't have to go through the board to make sure that's right.
Good.
Okay?
All right. So then for property maintenance or building code related in general, I believe you're correct?
There's various mixed in between. There is property maintenance, I believe the discussion of the lean probably is part of the property maintenance part of it, is number two on this.
Yeah, if you go to Larry or.
Mayor meeting, but other than that, yeah, there's various layers to this.
Sure.
It's kind of hard to say.
So do we have a timeframe when we think we're going to be able to have something presented?
Well, now that we know that we're really trying to go forward with this, we've already scheduled a meeting with some of the engineers and some of the building officials to get together, just to make sure that we are on the same page, one of them being Tom, who's kind of our building official, to kind of oversee. He's already been given a lot of this still in his works since he took over overseeing the building department for me back in January, and he's been giving his expertise throughout what he's done for other communities. Now, we've been passing some of that information along to Larry for review, and I think it's just trying to find out what will work for our team based on what plans are already in place.
Okay. Thank you very much. Laurie, I want to try and.
Dave, I think your mic's.
No, I think it's Laurie's just going on.
It works.
So Larry, I think we'll just, when we get to your section, we'll just like pick up items two and three.
Yes, sir.
So, all right. Under my report, specifically, I was just trying to figure out, we have the committee items in there. Sorry. Again, I'll reiterate, clerk hazers indicated just an exceptional, exceptional amount of work and collaboration went into another great festival. I'm not trying to steal the thunder from another person, but trustee, but I'm just impressed to see the community come together and have such a good time. And people really seem to enjoy the opportunity to get together. You know, we keep trying a few things, we make a few mistakes, we learn how to do things a little bit different, a little bit better, and that's all part of growing. And I was really pleased to see that it's, it can't just be about one person or a handful of people, it's about, you know, creating the community feel, participation, and there's no way that any one person can do that all by themselves. And it really does take a team effort of volunteers and department heads and everything else involved. So thank you all for that. I don't have anything else. Mr. Monteser.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Just to update the board and also the public, in reference to the Egyptian Trail project, I know it's just been a long road. We're now starting to see some daylight. We're now ready to move into our water main project, and the project is being coupled with Aqua. Aqua is also running their water main along Egyptian Trail. So the two projects will be running simultaneously, or I should say concurrently. There will be staggered times, as so we have room for the construction of both the village water main and Aqua water main to work together. So it has gone to bid, and the village staff has received the bids and have reviewed the bids. They were received at the village hall on September the eighth, twenty sixteen, for the Egyptian Trail Water Main project. The bids were made by M&amp;J Underground Incorporated, and that bid was nine hundred and eighteen thousand, eight hundred and eighty-one dollars and ten cents. The second bid was by TenCo Excavating Incorporated, and it's at one million, one hundred and seventeen thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars and thirty cents. So due to the significant cost savings on this project, we recommend the contract be awarded to M&amp;J Underground Incorporated. We would ask for a motion and approval to award the bid to M&amp;J Underground in the amount of nine hundred and eighteen thousand, eight hundred and eighty-one dollars and ten cents.
I'll make that motion.
Second discussion?
Yes.
That nine eighteen figure, where's that money coming from? I mean, in other words, how much are we putting up, and is there some grant money involved in that, or are there coming in?
Yes, as the board would recall, we were recently awarded one point five million, so some of that money would be coming from the recent grants. It's also from federal SDP and MFT funds to help with that, the cost.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Question, I, no, we sent the same bids out to everybody, but this is a twenty percent difference in cost between the two companies. Any reason why, any idea? Have we validated?
Yeah, I think one of the reasons that can have an effect on it is obviously one of it is in-town local lender, so the transportation costs potentially set up, and all that would be easier for them to deal with running back and forth so their shop doesn't need be. I believe also they, they probably are more likely to have a local location for trucking the, what do you call spoils, DJs? I mean, all the soil that they're removing, they probably have a closer location for doing that as well, which makes a huge difference. Trucking costs are one of the significant of the project, I guess.
Have we done work with them before?
M&amp;J.
Here. Oh, yeah.
One other question. This is a set price as far as the nine eighteen, they're not going to come back and give us like hidden costs, they didn't know something was there? Are we just a set?
Yes, it's a set cost. Yes, it's correct, yes. I think there's always a chance for, for a hidden cost, I should say, an unexpected cost. Something may arise sometime in the project.
If I may, a lot of times these contracts will indicate nine eighteen, but the contract itself will indicate that if they do find something that wasn't anticipated, it's an extra. So they'll come back before DJ or Ruben or the board and say, we found this additional, say, environmental issue. So, and then they'll give the advance notice prior to that, but almost every construction contract, you know, there is, there's some room in there in case they do find some issues out there. Shouldn't be, you never know. So it could be possible, Mark.
Probably having utility complaints, kind of preceding utility complaints can cause delays.
Anything else, sir?
We have a motion of a second.
Right. Roll call please.
Trustee Gonzalez.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Holston.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
Is that an ordinance? Is that, that's just an approval.
Just motion to authorize the mayor to execute and approve the bid revoked by M&amp;J.
So would that be a resolution we should do with it?
No, so, so as in a minute, we are, I think they have to work.
Okay. That's right.
So just, just to give the board kind of a timeline schedule, we're being told that there will be a pre-construction meeting on September the twenty-eighth. The construction start date will be October the third, and they're projecting a date of December twenty-ninth to complete the project. That would then create a timeframe of early twenty seventeen to begin the roadway construction project for Egyptian Trail. And just so the board is also aware, M&amp;J was also picked by Aqua to handle, so this will assist with the village to make this go a lot smoother and at a reduced cost to the village.
Good.
That's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Official group?
Public Works, trustee Gray.
A couple of things this evening. First, smoke testing has restarted again. It's starting, actually started Monday out in Walkers Grove. I saw it on the website for the Moni Village and the Moni Community website. Smoke testing's going to be Walkers Grove and in the Highlands, and get the information. Thank you. So the village officials will be out, those public works, and our hanging notices just to let the residents know what's going on in their subdivision as the weeks go on. And speaking of M&amp;J, if anybody remembers back on July fourth, unfortunately, the public works, not unfortunately, they had to work because of a water main break at Briar Lane and Margaret Street. In the process of that, they found issues that they couldn't, once they handled, and DJ and I did speak about this, but we are referring to M&amp;J to fix the water main breaks between what our public works did. And there's a request, just so everybody's knowing, of a proposal to three contractors, M&amp;J Underground, R&amp;R Inc., and Gene Ren Construction. The reviews are made. M&amp;J came into a proposal of fifteen thousand, one thirty-four, and R&amp;R Inc. out of Bradley came in at twenty-seven thousand, eight fifty, fix the issues that our public works found when that water main break happened on July fourth. And I'm not sure, DJ, if we're looking for a quest right now or just for information?
Basically, this is an information only as the board remembers back within twenty-fourteen, fifteen, with just anything under twenty grand, we could go ahead and get work done. In all fairness, I wanted to make sure that you guys knew till after a little bit. We found multiple breaks on one block between Onbriar between Margaret, when the new main was added behind Frankies and everything a few years back. They just stopped short, and they didn't replace this one section, so when we were digging, we found multiple clamp, multiple clamp, multiple clamp in this block section of the, the street crossing section of this main. And so basically, when we dig it up, it's all stone, it's just multiple clamps, and so the failure's imminent, and that's why we were going ahead to just replace it up to the next block area in order to be able to get it taken care of. But yes, it was just informational only, been authorized to the administrator, go ahead and proceed with the contract, because it wasn't cheaper, but we just wanted to let you guys know for informational sincerity, if there was a need and not, I haven't signed yet, I wanted to make sure you guys knew it, that there was something that they wanted me to do. We did send it to three contractors, two of them responded to it. Keener and you before, R&amp;R, Bradley, they were close, and then we gave it a go, so.
Thank you. Go to your.
Everybody okay with that? Information was, I had to report.
Thank you, sir. Bryce and Ray, trustee Gonzalez.
Okay, well, as you can imagine, my report has been pretty much solely revolved around Fall Fair. And again, thank you to everyone that attended the fair, and I know, as always, Friday night, you always get wet, so saying thank you for sticking it out with us. And again, I wanted to say thank you to all of the volunteers, and I don't think anybody realizes how many volunteer hours actually go into the Fall Fest, you know, of which the administration and all of the trustees, as well as all of our department, have volunteered their time, including, of course, Mary Jo Vincent, who's the, our commissioner of public parks and rec, and Michelle Powell, who puts in countless hours, and Bethany Abbott, who helps both of them, DJ and his crew of Department of Public Works, chief in the Moni Police Department, thank you for everything, Joe Batista and Daryl Bulliner, who, you know, constantly is watching over us, and Kevin, who helped us immensely Friday and Saturday night, thank you, thank you, thank you. And of course, Eva, who was out there directing traffic that night, too. So thank you for another fine Fall Fest and look forward to next year. And if you have any ideas, come sit on our committee with us. End of report.
Thank you. Finance, trustee Horn.
Hello.
Hi.
Hello.
Hi. My name's Doug. I'm a recovery trustee.
Whoops.
Well, that opened up a, I do have reports. And now that you've made all these comments, now I have it in my hands. Each trustee was provided information regarding a company called Azavar. Is that correct?
Yes.
Is that how you say it? The company specializes in maximizing revenues for villages throughout specified electronic, through a specified electronic review, revenue review. If you're interested, please let the finance director, Daryl Bulliner, aware. Otherwise, the staff will assume that there is not an interest in having a presentation. Now, each trustee is provided with a financial dashboard chart, eleven-by-eleven. Within the chart is the following information. Property taxes collected this year, this fiscal year, are at seventy percent. It's also a chart of how property tax payments are allocated and the major revenue sources for the village. The general fund expenses for the first four months ending in August two sixteen are at thirty-two percent of budgeted expenses. Each trustee has been provided a worksheet that further breaks out the departmental expenses. Any questions? Please talk to the finance department. Finance department has been working on the details of the property tax refund program. Each trustee is provided a draft copy of the program guidelines and import rates. Again, we talked to Daryl or myself. Fall Fest numbers are being calculated, and we expect to have those numbers next month. So we do not have the numbers on, on, on Fall, or, yeah, give us a few more words for that. End of report.
Thank you, sir. Business development, trustee Holston.
Yes, I've got a announcement that the, our business development update put out today. We're pleased to announce that the construction project at the southwest corner of Moni, Manhattan, ambition is in fact the Amazon Fulfillment Center, worst-kept secret I know of. Landing such an innovative company is a huge win for the village of Moni and the South suburban region. It wasn't always easy, but along the way, we found great support from our local county, state, federal, and corporate partners. This project is the product of tremendous collaboration. Amazon has grown to be more than an industry leader, they are an industry maker. In addition to their continued achievements in the operation and efficiency, we are impressed to learn of the benefits Amazon extends to its employees, most outstanding of which is the Career Choice Program, which provides up to ninety-five percent reimbursement of education expenses in selected fields such as graphic design programming and nursing. Much of our dialogue with Amazon has been focused upon their desire to be a partner in the community, and with that, we look forward to what the future will bring. I, along with the village staff, the village clerk, the mayor, who was privileged to go up to Wisconsin and visit their site not too long ago, and was very impressed with what I saw, so we're looking forward to having them in the community. Also want to touch base on the IML next week. Spent a good part of my day today, now that I'm retired, I have all this free time, working on the agenda for next week. There's a bunch of different programs that are being offered, some of which I think are pretty interesting. There is a app that you can put on your phone that is very easy to use. I've already signed up for most of the seminars that I plan on attending. Couple ones I've noticed, one of which I heard something about tonight, I think would be good. Is your sign ordinance regulation constitutional is a good one, that's going to be on Thursday morning, I plan on attending that. The importance of the planning in TIF, enterprise zones, and making zoning and developing rules user-friendly. There's a number of other ones next week that are going to be offered, and I would encourage the trustees to go to their webpage, it's very easy to navigate that, and start looking at the options for that. End of report.
Thank you, sir. Building Services with Superintendent Cruzwell.
Sorry, Paul.
Public Safety with Chief Sikkert.
No important.
General Director.
Attorney's Report.
Thank you, Mayor. Got a few items, one item on the agenda, it's going to be no action taken, I believe, on the proposal development agreement, DJ. There's no action taken, there's no agreement, they're still in discussions with respect to the proposal redevelopment agreement, so hopefully within October, so you might have something for the board to take a look at.
Larry, if we need to, for some reason, timing becomes an issue, nothing to say, we can't call, especially if you didn't just address it.
Okay. A question on that, we're just waiting for DG, Moni Givers, to move on that, right?
To clarify, Doug, to clarify on that, they already have building permits pulled, information
So, hopefully, within October, so you might have something for the board to take a look at.
We need to, for some reason, timing becomes an issue. Nothing to say we can't call, especially if you didn't just address it.
Okay.
A question on that, we're just waiting for DG, Moni Gathers, to move on that, right?
To clarify, to clarify on that, they already have building permits, poll information in that regard. They've already gotten all the technical aspects of what they're trying to accomplish presented to us. And the board has already agreed to the property adjustments and things of that sort, to allow road and all that kind of stuff. Everything they've requested thus far, we've been accommodating of. The only thing we're working on the details of now is they're looking for an incentive. And they're working out the details of those incentives in order to make it mutually beneficial to the investor of the development, as well as for the village and its long-term purposes. So, those details are what remain to be worked out. Yeah, go ahead, you got two words?
Yes, sir. Two other items that we were going to talk about at the committee meeting deals with the discussion of lanes. I've been asked to look at the different means that we have on file. It's for a reason. Let me just, go ahead.
Go. Yeah, now.
Thank you. The discussion of lanes and the lanes we have on file right now. Presently, we have the right to impose a lien for grass cutting services. I think we adopted that in 2014. We also have the right to impose a lien for delinquent water bills. These type of lanes, municipal lanes, you have to file with the Recorder of Deeds Office. Usually, in situations, it might be multiple lanes. It's really first come, first served, if we can file that lien on, with the Recorder of Deeds Office. We've been doing this since, I would say, 2001, 2002, you know, fairly successful at collecting on the liens. The one priority lien, as we talked about, is what they call a demolition lien. Demolition liens are for properties that are basically abandoned, where the city's got to go in. And thankfully, it hasn't happened in this village, where a city will go in and demolish a building that's either abandoned or a dangerous building. A city at that point in time has the right, still with notice to the lender, that they're going in to demolish the building. The costs they incur with respect to that, you could put a lien on the property for that. Once again, those are priority liens. It has not happened here. The liens that we have on file that we can place right now, again, is for a water lien, where individuals are delinquent with water bills, and/or grass cutting lien, which is the same thing as a weed lien. We can change the, some of the timeframe and terminology in the present liens, but right now, they are on the books. Again, demolition lien, you can have an extermination lien. The most common ones that you see are closing, are usually for water or grass cut.
Just to clarify, Larry, the reason why it came up was because it was presented to staff that some municipalities have implemented this priority lien. But in further review, is what you're saying here, that the towns have perhaps implemented that, might actually be implemented because of a much more blighted type scenario where they're actually going in and doing demolitions like Chicago or some of the other communities that are actually having to tear down properties because they're truly unsafe.
Yes, and sometimes you run into a situation where you file a lien against a property. And then, that's fine, then you're what they call a secured creditor. But if that company, that individual either does a foreclosure or bankruptcy, your lien, that means nothing. So, the mortgage liens out there, the tax liens out there, you know, we can file the lien, which we have. And we've collected on quite a few of them since 2001. But there are recourse's for the homeowner, again, if they do go bankrupt, chapter seven, we're out.
So, Larry, would you recommend that we do go ahead and implement, so we have it on the books, a priority lien mechanism, so that at least?
For, for, yes.
In the event that we actually over had to do that?
Yes.
Let's hope that we don't have to do that. At least it's already on the books if we ever had to.
Yes, and that's usually, Mayor, when it's a dangerous situation where?
Truly public safety.
Exactly. And you go in, you tear it down, still get the lender notice, given the opportunity to remedy it, they usually don't. They usually come in and say, "What can we do to try to pay off your lien?" But it's situations where the property's in real bad shape.
Absolutely. I can't think of any right now, so.
And as, I do have a nuisance ordinance that distributed to staff, and the real estate transfer ordinance, which still addresses liens, where the bill's got to be paid prior to a sale of property. And the nuisance ordinance also, I have in there that in the event the property's unsecured, you know, you could probably file a claim against that. So, there's a couple ways of collecting, again, you've been pretty good about collecting. There's a few situations, again, if someone files chapter seven, you're not going to collect. So, I'll go over the nuisance and the real estate transfer ordinance, which I think is, they'll solve some problems. It's not a transfer stamp, it's not a payment stamp, it's very common where when you do order a title, that they just do a couple closures in Moni, title will show up, and it'll say this. The village, the municipality itself have a inspection, and this is what it is. And you inspect the premises, if there's code violations, they got to be remedied prior to a closing. And/or, the buyer signs off saying they'll accept it and fix it within six months. And a lot of villages in the South suburbs are doing this. So, it's protection for the village and it's protection for the buyer.
Absolutely. Okay. Anything else?
None of that issue, your honor. The compensation?
Sure.
Just to, for the board's information, if the board deemed appropriate, the compensation for elected officials, there's a deadline on that, is, you have to have that six months before the next board is sworn in. So, if the board looked at changing the compensation for elected officials, yourself, the mayor, the village clerk, that notice would have to be adopted by the last board meeting in October. And it only affects the positions that would be vacant. If you're an existing trustee, that compensation, if it was changed, won't be effective until the next term, which would be what, 2018? So, it's up for the review by the board. Compensation is based on how much time is put in. If you look at your time that you put in, we could look at different villages about their compensation. There's no action being taken tonight, but it has, the last time that was done was, I believe, 14 years ago. And I know villages, it's been in the paper recently, about some villages, about the compensation schedule. It's too late for November, but it would have to be by, again, the last board meeting in October, so it'd be effective May of 2017.
If I may, I would like to just give a little history to the board on the compensation over the last 25 years. 1993, the ordinance established $500 per month as a pay for the mayor and $50 per meeting. In 96, what's that? In 1996, the ordinance established $600 per month as a pay for the mayor and $75 per meeting.
For trustees.
For the trustees, yes. And then, in 2002, the pay for a mayor was $10,200. And trustees received $125 for each meeting. And then, the last, most recent compensation increase occurred in 2008, established the current compensation of $13,000 for the mayor, and established $200 per meeting for trustees. So, that is the, that is the current history of compensation for building officials. And again, if we voted on it as a board, it would not affect, it would not, may affect us, but it wouldn't take effect until the next election cycle. And only those trustees who are up for election, or the vacant seats in there, so.
Good. Anybody else?
No, sir.
All right. Full business? New business? Open to the public, non-agenda items? If you come to the podium, leave your name and address, and tell me your comments in three minutes? Anybody?
Little break, 2706 poll. I just want to say to everybody sitting in front of me, Phil's officials, Public Works, attorneys for my family, thank you. Thank you for your support, as much as we butt heads, sitting here with the loss that we had last week. We came together via text, via personal. From my family, to everybody here, thank you. That's all.
Anybody else under public public?
I think the call's been 5326. West Main, speaking on behalf of the Moni Historical Society. Mr. Mayor, we're going to put that off for another meeting only because Ben couldn't make it tonight. But just as an FYI, we have received historical status from Will County for the Moni Creamery. And we'll be making that plaque available to the city at the next meeting. I've been wanting to know, I can find out where it is.
Thank you. I'm sorry, did you say you lost the creamery or the plaque?
No, the plaque, DJ got to Moni Creamery plaque over here.
Anybody else? I don't believe we have anything for the session, Larry.
No, sir.
And at this point, time is now 7:14. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion. Second?
What was it, Ford and Holston? Roll call, please.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Great.
Yes.
Holston?
Yes.
And then, Warren?
Yes.
Thank you.